Welcome to Murfreesboro City Council, May 17, 2012. At this time, I will ask everyone to stand and we will be honored to have the National Honor Guard Competition Champions host the colors for us. I'll ask them to go ahead and do that now at this time. Our players allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. If you will, please join me in a moment of silent prayer. Amen. Thank you, Chief Gaines. If you want to get those, hand some good-looking firefighters and bring them up and let's recognize them at this time. I don't show turn around and face Chief Gaines so we can see you on that camera right there. You go ahead, stand up, Chief Gaines.
My house gonna burn down. Honorable Mayor, Members of Council, I would like for you to share in one of the most memorable and proudest days of 32 years of serving this department. It's today to present to you the National Honor Guard Champions. This Honor Guard was implemented, let me give you a little brief history and I'll be brief. This Honor Guard was implemented in 1998, so after 14 years of past members, present members, some discontent, some disarray, they banded together, they committed, and they went for what they wanted, and I commend them for that. They knew what they wanted, I didn't think that they had peaked, but evidently they knew better than I did. So, I commend you, I'm so proud of you. But, I'd like to introduce numbers of the Honor Guard that won the championship, Captain Mike Adams. And Captain Gary Hutchison is not able to be present with us today, Captain Thomas Captain Jeff Irvin. Captain Inspector Nora Smith. And Captain Wade Williams. Driver Randy Shaw. And firefighters Greg Burton and Charles Powell.
I want to thank you and let's all give these a round of applause. Thank you, Chief Gaines, and to the Honor Guard, you have made us proud and you make us proud every time we see you, and you'll always be the champs with us, I hope you understand that. Thank you very much for being here tonight, taking time out of your schedule to honor us. That was nice, we might want to do that every meeting, I think, every meeting, yes. Vice Mayor, I'm going to ask you to take the chair, I've got a special presentation I want to make. We have a special guest with us tonight, someone who's not unfamiliar with these chambers, and I'm going to ask former Vice Mayor Chris Bratcher, please to join me here at the podium. I know you're accustomed to asking the questions over there on that side, but tonight, I wanted to welcome you back to the council chambers, and we want to do just a little bit of honoring of 24 years of service to the city council and to the residents and business owners, and those people who've come to Murfreesboro to visit our fine city. I want to tell you how much we appreciate what you've done, how proud we are of you and what you've done, and it's my pleasure tonight to present a proclamation to you. I know you've done a few proclamations, but I'm not going to give you the keys to the city, that's just out. We'd have to change all the locks and that just doesn't work. So, Fred Christopher, Chris Bratcher II, as Murfreesboro native who has served steadfastly in his role as Murfreesboro City Council member since taking the reins of municipal government in 1988. He became Vice Mayor in 2001, served competently in that role, relieving the mayor of many duties over the years. Thank you. Not just me as mayor either, there were several before me, Mayor Reeves, Mayor Jackson. You began your service at the ripe old age of 29, and served faithfully and honorably for 24 years with selfless public service, sacrificing time away from his profession and family, in dedicated service to the citizens of Murfreesboro, and you faced many difficult issues over your long council career, but along with your many and honorable fellow council members, mayors and city managers through the years, you were able to join them in paving a responsible way for Murfreesboro to become the large and vibrant city that it has become. So therefore, I, Tommy Bragg, Mayor of the City of Murfreesboro, on behalf of our entire city council, do hereby proclaim this as a day to honor Chris Bratcher. For your 24 years of service, and I urge all to join me as we celebrate this community-minded man's contributions to the city of Murfreesboro. And let me present this to you, congratulations. And I would let you say something, but I might not, but I might. But, we do want to make one other special presentation. There is a bridge, it's not the bridge to nowhere either, it's the bridge to McFadden. You grew up in the McFadden area, and it's my pleasure to tell you that we intend to name the bridge over the railroad at McFadden, the Chris Bratcher Bridge, for you. All right, you might have a word you'd like to share with us. I'll give you the mic.
Oh, thank you, Mayor, it's an honor to be here tonight, to be on this side of the podium for a change, and I had a great ceremony this afternoon, I appreciate everyone attended, and, you know, as I think Lou Gehrig said it one time, today, I'm the happiest man on the face of the earth, and this has been a great honor to serve the citizens of Murfreesboro and the employees, and to serve with Mayor Bragg, I think he's the best mayor I think I've ever seen in Tennessee and across the nation. We've got a great city, the people live here, have been very gracious, and it's just been an honor for me to grow up here, and grow up on this council, and grow up amongst my friends, and like I said earlier, I came in, I came on board, I really wanted to, you know, make a difference and do a lot of change, and I think, I hope we've made Murfreesboro a better place, but along the way, knowing you guys and getting to be a part of your lives, you're the one that changed me and made me a better person, and I'm honored to be a part of the city and be a part of your lives, so thank you very much.
I'll thank you. It's gonna be a lot bigger on the bridge. Thank you. I'll thank former Vice Mayor Bratcher for being here tonight, we had a wonderful reception at 3 o'clock in the rotunda today, and I appreciate him bringing his family and sharing the time with us, and certainly, he has been a benefit to our city and someone we've all enjoyed serving with, and we've learned, as he has learned, to try to do the people's business in the best way we know how, and certainly, he is an example of doing that, so I appreciate him being with us and sharing this time with us tonight, thank you. All right, council members, you have before you your consent agenda, if you've had an opportunity to take a look at the consent agenda, what are your wishes regarding those items?
Mayor, I move for approval.
Second.
Thank you, motion in second, please call the roll.
Mr. Gilli.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye. This time, we'll consider for passage on third and final reading an ordinance to rezone an area located along Kimbrough Road to residential, single-family aid RS8 District and residential, multifamily 16 RM16 District.
Move for approval.
Second.
All right, motion in second, please call the roll, Ms. Wright.
Mr. Gilli.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye. This time, we'll consider for passage again on third and final reading an ordinance to rezone an area located along Kimbrough Road to residential, single-family aid RS8 District and residential, multifamily 16 RM16 District.
Move for approval.
Second.
All right, motion in second, please call the roll.
Mr. Gilli.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye. This time, we'll consider for passage again on third and final reading an ordinance to rezone an area located along Warrior Drive to Highway Commercial CH District.
Move for passage on third and final reading.
Second.
Thank you, motion in second, please call the roll.
Mr. Gilli.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye. This time, we'll consider for passage again on third and final reading an ordinance to rezone an area located along South Church Street to Commercial Friends CF District.
So moved, second.
Thank you, motion in second, please call the roll, Ms. Wright.
Mr. Gilli.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye. This time, we'll consider for passage on first reading an ordinance amending Section 4-43 dot 1, Special Limited Event Permit Concerning Beer. Ms. McGannan.
Mayor, Members of the Council, as indicated in the cover letter to the ordinance, this is brought to you because we've had, the city's had requests for permits that have not met within our current definition for special limited event permits. Ms. Wright, who deals with those applications, and I have discussed the matter, and the proposal before you is to consider, and it's certainly not the only option, you can modify this if you believe that appropriate, this is the maximum, so to speak, after consultation with the city manager that we wanted to bring to you. Currently, as stated in the ordinance, special limited event permits are for a maximum of four hours in duration, and there is prohibition against scheduling two at the same location, in other words, two separate permits biggybacking one another, and the proposal is that a special limited event permit would be allowed for up to 12 hours. The second change reflected in Section 2 deals with the number of special event limited permits. Currently, our ordinance prohibits more than 15 in a year and more than two in a month, and the suggested change is to say that you could not have more than 30 in a year, but you would be able to combine those during any number in any months that you wanted. This seemingly would give the flexibility, it was something that we staff had talked about on several occasions, we had a request from an organization that was going to have a multi-day event that was from 10 or 11 in the morning to 10 at night, and that sought this permit for other reasons, they are not proceeding under the special limited event permit, but are going to get a regular permit, but it seemed to us this was a recurring issue, and that we wanted to bring it to you so the council could consider if you wish to make changes. The difference between regular and special limited event permits is that special limited event permits are only available for not-for-profit organizations, they have a lower fee than a regular beer permit, and we don't require the codes inspections to make sure that all requirements, including signage, are in place. The reason for that is often nonprofits are using somebody else's venue, and so if that venue was not code compliant, it wouldn't really impact them the way it would as if somebody were seeking a beer permit that was going to be an ongoing business, and so that is the proposal that's brought to you, as I say, based on some requests from nonprofit organizations, including the Chamber of Commerce, that we've been unable to accommodate within the ordinance structure that we currently have.
All right, any questions, you have this ordinance before you, any questions of Ms. McGannan or Ms. Wright, and it's another, one of the good things you get to do every day, is to deal with the beer permit applications that come into the city, so.
Mayor, to give you an example, just for example purposes, we, on the Center for the Arts, when it was on that board, the backstage bash was something that dealt with this, that the backstage bash would start at 6 o'clock, and they did serve beer, and then at 10 o'clock, you know, they were, had to quit, so, and that was something I think that they had requested for a couple of years, and there was just not much that, much that could be done, so, and that's really with most of the not-for-profits that are not using a venue that serves alcohol, so.
All right, any other questions or comments regarding this?
I'd move for approval.
Second.
All right, there's a motion in second for approval, any questions on the motion? If not, please call the roll, Ms. Wright.
Mr. Gilli.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye. Consider now for passage on first reading an ordinance amending Chapter 33 Water and Sewer, Section 33 dash 1 of the Murfreesboro City Code, dealing with minimum monthly water charges and minimum monthly sewer charges. Mr. Kirchner, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a continuation of a process we started back in 2008, to whereby, in our cost of service study by Jackson Thornton at Montgomery, Alabama, it was determined that we were underfunded in our revenue requirements on the water and sewer side. It was determined that the, there were some users that were subsidizing others, and this is to make it more equitable amongst classifications, meaning between residential, commercial, industrial-type customers, and this, it's really not a rate increase, it's a rate design change, in that we're reducing the minimum allowance, it's now 100 cubic feet per month, and then everything above that, you pay for $2.74, this is going to reduce that minimum allowance to 50, and then you'll pay for all the water used over 50 cubic feet, so you get the first 50 cubic feet for the $8.22, which is the minimum bill. We'll continue this process next year and take it to zero, and then in subsequent years, we'll do some more evaluation, we have a cost of service study that will get the results in June, and we'll look at that as far as where we might be in the future, but we'll certainly look at our rates annually, as we always have, and see that we tweak those as need be. We have, part of this is where we'll need the debt service for our Tennessee revolving fund, and this will help fund that. The state has requirements that we have to have user fees in place in order to get those funds from them, that they think are adequate.
All right, you have this recommended amendment for minimum monthly water charges and monthly sewer charges for the Murfreesboro Water and Sewer Department, are there any questions for Mr. Kirchner regarding this recommendation? If there are no questions, what are your wishes?
Mayor, I move for approval, for passage on first reading.
A motion in second for approval on first reading. Any questions regarding the motion? If not, please call the roll.
Mr. Gilli.
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Washington.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye. Thank you, Mr. Kirchner, this time pursuant to a resolution adopted by city council on April the 19th, 2012, we'll conduct a public hearing to consider a PRD amendment for approximately 22.6 acres located along Florence Road known as Seward Crossing, FKA Fillmore West. Old South Properties Incorporated is the applicant notice of the said public hearing was published in April 29th, 2012, issue of the local newspaper. Welcome, Ms. Traitelock.
Thank you, Mayor Bragg and Members of the Council. Tonight, I'm filling in for Margaret Ann Ealy, who is at some training, she's been gone all week, I miss her very badly, I wish she were here tonight to present this, but her training will be an investment in our future, so I guess it will be worth it. The property as a subject of this public hearing is located along the west side of Florence Road, this property is known as the Sewards Crossing, it was approved as a PRD zoning in 2005 under the name of Fillmore West. The development plan includes a program book that specified the house sizes, the masonry contents, the number of lots, the design of the subdivision, et cetera. This subdivision was very unfortunately one of the first casualties of our economic downturn, I think one house got constructed and then it promptly stopped. The streets had some failures because of some bad judgment on the part of the contractor. Ultimately, a bank got the property back, since that time, I think four or five more homes have been constructed, maybe a couple of them are under construction right now. The lots that have been platted are shown in blue on the map that I have on my computer there, and is now on the screens, those lots have been purchased by Old South Properties, Old South Properties is ready to move in there and really develop the subdivision out, they're ready to breathe life into the neighborhood and get it back under, well, to get back under good management, they're moving forward with that. One of the things that they want to do is to amend the program book to fit their house plans a little bit better. One of the, there are really basically two amendments that they are proposing, one amendment would be to change the setback for the One amendment would be to change the setback for the garage on the structure. This subdivision development plan requires that the garage is set 35 foot from the right away, that allows cars to be parked in the driveway. The development plan also allows that the main house can be 20 foot from the street. What they're wanting to do is, or excuse me, 25 foot from the street. What they're wanting to do is to allow the same setback for the garage as for the remainder of the house. The second matter is to change one of the requirements. The plan specifies for the front, that it be brick or stone. They're wanting to also add hardy plank, basically, or cementitious siding, the fiber siding, that we call hardy plank, to that pallet of acceptable building materials. With regards to the, a matter of the parking, the planning commission discussed that quite a bit. That was something of concern. And what I want to show on the screen is, if I'm going the right direction here, will be some, an exhibit that helped the planning commission to understand this better, and that's this exhibit. In the subdivision, this is a little bit unique in that there are several areas for parking lots, little sub-parking lots within the development. One of them has already been constructed near the front. It's available for visitor parking, and that's what it was designed for, and that's what it is intended to do. Later, further into the subdivision in subsequent sections, there will be additional parking lots, eight to 12 spaces in each one of them, and possibly more of those may be constructed. That's something that we've had a little bit of discussion with, with the owners. So that's something that I think weighed heavily with the planning commission. Also, this is not a collector's street. The street will not be a street that has a lot of through traffic from other subdivisions. Really, this is going to be a self-contained subdivision. It may tie into the property to the south, but that's not a collector's street. So it will allow for on-street parking without expecting a lot of through traffic in the area. With regards to the cementitious siding, I think there were some concerns about that, not from the planning commission, but from the neighborhood, and there was a little bit of a misunderstanding. They were thinking that they was going to change the backs or the, take away the masonry from the subdivision, or change the square footage. At the planning commission, we had about three or four gentlemen who spoke. They were a little reluctant, but I think the planning commission had a very good feeling about this. After the planning commission meeting, I will tell you that the applicant's representative met with the neighborhood. I think that afterwards, from the communications I received, they actually kind of felt a whole lot better about the situation, once they had their questions answered on one-to-one level. The planning commission was, all of the members were present at that meeting, the, after the public hearing, they did deliberate, as I said, and they did unanimously recommend these amendments. To help you, there are a couple exhibits that are basically are pages from the existing program book, and this would be one of them, and it is included with the materials. I can't read what's on the screen from here, so you may want to look at the ones in your book. But these basically spell out the changes. It shows the revised footprint and how the parking would relate, and basically, these would just change out pages from the program book. And this again shows the lots that are in question. Originally, the applicant requested only the lots that are colored yellow, but the planning commission wanted to stay the entire subdivision, because when the subdivision extends, we want the same regulations to apply throughout the whole thing, and including the existing lots. With that, I'd be glad to answer your questions. I will note that the applicant and his agent are present here to answer your questions, if you have any, as well.
So the house size is not changing, is it?
That is correct. The house size will not be changing.
And the hardy plank is replacing?
It's offering another building material, in addition to the brick and stone.
And was there a percentage of brick and stone?
Yes, sir, I believe there is.
The home masonry content would be brick or stone foundation, 80% of the front exterior in brick and stone, cement tile, stucco, or fiber cement board. That's 80% of the front.
That is correct.
And lots on Florence Road will have 80%. On the side facing the street, each dwelling will have or a metal mailbox. Okay. Questions for Ms. Radalot before I open the public hearing?
Ms. Radalot, you mentioned that the drive's waist length, or the garage setback, was going to go from 36 to 25 or something in length?
Yes, sir. 35 to 25 is what they are requesting.
This is just a question that I've got. How long is the average car?
Well, we generally think of a parking space as being 20-foot long, particularly when it's a, what I would call, a tandem space, where you drive through one to get to the next.
So the driveway is going to accommodate only one vehicle?
As they are requesting, yes, sir. One more thing to kind of add to this equation that sometimes is sort of missed. Really, if you, if you, if you take cars and scrunch them up, you can get by with about 17 feet, so the 35-foot will allow two cars in tandem. And just, it just clears the sidewalk. Now, the property line is about seven feet behind the curb. It's not, it's not the curb line. Lots of times, people think that the property line is the curb line. The sidewalk, the, generally, the property line is about the back edge of the sidewalk, or about seven, seven and a half feet behind the curb.
Ms. Radalot, it will accommodate two cars?
Side by side.
That is correct.
Tandem.
Right, in tandem. Tandem is where you drive through, we call it tandem space, where you drive through one to get to the next. My apologies, I might have confused that.
What that's also doing, though, is increasing the size of the backyard, is it not, for?
That is precisely one of the reasons for making this application to make for a little bit larger backyard, and to also, many of the house plans that this development company uses, he wants to be able to use them here. They've proven successful in this market, Murfreesboro, and wants to be able to adapt them into this area. And one of his problems is, they don't have the, an additional 10-foot setback for the garage. And by using his existing house plans, he basically pushes the house to the back of the lot, using up his backyard space.
But, but he has a two-car garage on every house, and the two-car storage in, on this?
That is correct.
Now, of course, a lot of people have boxes and things to put in their garage.
I think one thing that ended up impressing the planning commission on this application was the, the additional parking that's in the, the little neighborhood parking lots in the, the development plan. And already, the first one's already constructed near the front. There's a little cemetery in the front, and it provides a, both visitor parking for the people in the subdivision, as well as people wanting to visit the little cemetery.
All right. Any other questions before I open the public hearing? If not, I'll open the public hearing at this time. Anyone wishing to speak for or against this PRD amendment, please step to the microphone, give us your name and address.
John Floyd, 2637 Sequoia Place, Indian Hills. I'm the president of Old South. This is one of several communities that we have bought lots or taken over during the, I call it the Great Depression of the real estate community, but whatever you want to call it. Anyway, this is the first time we've been here to ask for a change. Let's first talk about the hardy board. Obviously, our Puckett Station product here in Murfreesboro has been highly successful. It creates a look that, that people like. I mean, we, we have to sell houses that people like. Honestly, the, the brick and vinyl siding is a stale look. We've built a whole bunch of them, been very successful with that, but times change, people's wishes change. And the, the hardy board, it's, it's an expensive product. It's obviously an upgrade over vinyl siding, and it's an attractive product. And we need to build houses that people like and want to buy. There's a reason the project failed, and we can't make the same mistake twice, and we've already closed on this. This is not an option for us. That was part of the deal. Obviously, like in Puckett Station, our setbacks are 25 feet. These homes are obviously high-end homes. We're only asking for the same setback that we have in Puckett. You can do all you want to determine how people park their cars, but you're going to be, I'd just love for your daughter or teenage kid to park behind you, you leave at 6:00 in the morning, see how long that lasts. You're going to tell that kid to park on the road one way or the other. You can't dictate people's lifestyles and how they live. Obviously, you've got a two-car garage, and you have two parking spots at four. The original way was just to have six. Well, I can tell you, these folks in this neighborhood don't have six cars. It's just, it's just not, that's not the case here. But anyway, these are just, obviously, our big problem with this development, and I know I've already purchased it, and I'm not here to cry, is that they're 60 by 92. And I'm telling you, in Murfreesboro, there's not many subdivisions that are 90 feet, 92 feet depth. That is extremely tight, so it gives us a very small envelope to build on. And then you take the 92, and you say, well, we want the garage 35 feet back. Well, people want a little yard. I mean, this is going to be, these houses are, got to go straight up. There's no question, whether it's 35 or 25, they got to go straight up. They got to be boxes. They're just such a small envelope. And we know we can be successful with this, because we're going to sell square footage. We're going to sell, these folks are going to get a bigger house than they would get, say, an Evergreen Farm or somewhere like that. But anyway, that's kind of the, the gist of, of our, our wishes here and what we want to do. I think we'll be an asset to the neighborhood. I think we're an asset to the city of Murfreesboro, and I hope you all can help us. Thank you.
Any, anyone else wishing to speak for or against? Anyone else? If not, I'll close the public hearing at this time. We'll consider for passage on first reading an ordinance to amend the PRD for an area located along Florence Road known as Seward Crossing. I guess that's formerly known as Fillmore West. Is there a motion?
Move for passage on first reading.
Second. All right. Motion in second. Thank you. Please call the roll.
Mr. Gilli?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye.
This time, we'll consider for adoption a resolution granting a license to the Experienced Community Church. Ms. McGannon?
Mayor Bragg, members of council, you have before you on the table tonight a proposed revision of the resolution with the change being underlined. Let me give you some background. The city was approached by the Experienced Community Church, who had been offering a ministry of providing free food Friday nights, 10 to 2, in the square, using propane grill to prepare hot dogs and having sodas and bottled waters. They had done that in the interior portion next to the county courthouse, and were interested in moving it out to the city sidewalk, had done so, challenged by the police that they didn't have the appropriate city approval for that, ended up in my office indicating what do we need to do to be able to do this? Can we do this? As you know, we put certain expectations on property owners adjacent to sidewalk. We make them do certain things. Many of our downtown, actually, all of them had to contribute financially when we rebuilt those sidewalks. And we've got a variety of issues that we had dealt with, with the sidewalk cafes, in terms of having clear passageway under the Americans with Disability Act, preventing damage to the sidewalks, et cetera. We have an ordinance which says you won't have food out on the sidewalk. We made an exception for that for the sidewalk cafes. It seems to me that a similar exception could be made for this proposed activity, but the sidewalk cafe licensure would be inappropriate. So I discussed with various city departments that I thought would have an interest, what concerns they might have if this activity were to be allowed, and discussed with the fire department, who, under our existing codes, they have advised me that there needs to be a 10-foot separation from a combustible material, and that they would feel better if there was a working fire extinguisher. Spoke with Ms. Holloway about the experience she and her staff have had trying to keep that area clean. Spoke with the police department. And then spoke with our traffic engineer, Mr. Balachandran, which led to the revision that you had before, your concern about pedestrian safety and having the proposed activity back from intersections, so that the site triangle would not be obstructed. As I indicated, we view the adjacent property owners as having concern with what happens in sidewalks and vicinities thereto. The area that they had expressed an interest in was in front of county property. I got in touch with Mayor Burgess, and he has indicated that the county has no opposition. The resolution that was proposed before you to give them a license was not limited to that particular location, but it has terms that indicate the safety concerns I've alluded to need to be met, and that it's only applicable where the adjacent building owner has no objection. We know that the initial site is one where the adjacent building owner has no objection, and it does contain requirements for trash maintenance and other sorts of things, and stated, as we did with our sidewalk cafes, that this was a revocable license, that it was on a trial basis. The information that Mr. Morales, who wrote the letter that was attached to your material, and he was here tonight, indicated that this is a ministry that has been offered successfully in Knoxville, and that they have had success with it on the couple of occasions that they have done it in the vicinity of the county courthouse. So this comes to you as a, this is the way staff believes this request could be accommodated. It does not come as a staff request that this be approved. I think, I think staff is neutral on that, but wanted to have a, if the council wishes to do this, this is how staff would recommend that you do it. And as I said, Mr. Morales is here. I'd be happy to answer any questions about staff's recommendation for the structure.
Any questions of Ms. McGannon regarding this?
What were the hours of operation?
10 to 2 Friday nights.
10 to 2?
10:00 PM to 2:00 AM. Their desire is to reach persons who might be leaving some of our local restaurants and drinking establishments. The suggestion was that this might help them sober up, and that it would be an activity that would potentially draw young people who would be interested, receive the ministry, and perhaps be interested in the church. But it was a, as I say, totally free and as a ministry activity, not a commercial activity.
Did, did you say this was on sort of a trial basis?
Well, I'm saying the city's license would be on a trial basis, so we want to make it clear that this isn't guaranteed for any particular time. If there are problems with it, the license can be withdrawn, because then our existing ordinance, which would prohibit this kind of activity, absent a license, would be in place.
I know you're fully aware that there have been some incidents early in the mornings on the square as the, some establishments close, and that, that this could maybe help the situation, or?
I think that was their thought, and as I said, the police department has, has no opposition to this, so I think they believe it would not aggravate the situation and has the potential to help.
If, if there is trash and debris left, we will have the option to require them to clean this up as, as it?
Yeah, the requirement is that they keep it clean. If they don't keep it clean, staff would be coming back to you and say, this hasn't worked, we think the license should be revoked.
Thank you.
Should we put a revoke, a period in, so that?
What we could, what you might want to do, rather than making it for a period of time, because that implies they've got a right for a period of time, I prefer to have it revocable at any time. What you might want to do is have staff report to you after a period of time as to how it's going. We could solicit input from the police department and urban environmental to see if there were any either orderly or trash concerns.
Thank you. I don't expect any problems with that, if you answered my question. Any other questions from Ms. McGannon? Certainly be interesting to see how that works out, and certainly appreciate their interest in our downtown area and those patrons of our light entertainment district.
Mayor, I would move for approval, but with your recommendation of staff coming back in 45 days with an update on how this is going.
We can certainly do that, since they're indicating an intent not to do it necessarily every Friday night. You know, that might not be the only report that you want.
Okay.
Because we may not have enough incidents to fully evaluate it.
Okay. How about 90 days?
Certainly.
Okay.
All right. That's a motion.
Second.
And a second. Staff will come back. This resolution will grant this license. It's revocable, and that they can come back in 90 days. The staff will then report on how well it's working out. I'm assuming the staff is going to be there from 10 to 2:00 AM?
Not the staff.
Other agents of the city, is that what you're saying?
Yes, sir.
All right. We have a motion, second. Sorry, I stirred that up. Please call the roll. Ms. Wright?
Mr. Gilli?
The staff will then report on how well it's working out. I'm assuming the staff is going to be there from 10 to 2 a.m.
Not the staff.
Other, other agents of the city, is that what you're saying?
Yes, sir.
All right, we have a motion, second. Sorry, I stirred that up. Luke, call the roll. Ms. Wright?
Mr. Gilly?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye. Thank you, and thanks to Pastor Morales there. Also, we have any beer permit applications tonight?
None tonight.
I noticed that there's not a list of bills to be paid. You paid all the bills?
Yeah, there's a list.
Oh, I didn't get one.
He's got the T M L.
Okay, thank you. You have a list of the statements to be considered for payment.
The debt service you asked about last night is on there.
You got this $20,891,000?
It's the one we discussed last night.
Just in the checking account?
Sure, I do.
All right, you have these statements.
Move to pay the bills.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Gilly. Please call the roll.
Mr. Gilly?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye. At this time, I'd like to announce the assignments for council members to board and commissions. Mr. Gilly to the Planning Commission and Risk Management Committee. Ms. Harris to Cable Television, Parks and Recreation, and Lineball Library. Mr. McFarland, Old Fort Golf Commission and the Pension Committee. Mr. Smotherman to Parks and Recreation, Urban Environmental, and the Airport Commission. Mr. Washington to School Board Liaison and to remain on St. Clair Street Center Board. Mr. Young to remain on the St. Clair Senior Center Commission and the Planning Commission. And Mr. Lyons, I think you have two appointments, too, but I'd recommend these, which are my oral appointments to the council tonight. Move for approval.
Second.
All right, you have a motion and second. Please call the roll.
Mr. Gilly?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye. Mr. Lyons?
Yes, sir. I would recommend Mr. Gilly to the Power Board, and secondly, I'd like to recommend Mr. Washington to the Water and Sewer Board, but I would like to point out one thing on the city manager's appointment to the Water and Sewer Board. There's been instances since I've been city manager where I have approached you and asked for additional authority. This is a situation where I would like to give up some authority, and that is the appointment process to, to the Water and Sewer Board. Clearly, the Water and Sewer Director reports to the city manager, so there's the opportunity for this position, not Rob lines, but this position, to have the ability to influence and provide input on policy and direction. However, I've always looked at the boards and commissions as citizen representatives who provide input to the boards and commissions. And it feels better to me that the city council would make the appointment to the Water and Sewer Board. So if there's no objection, what I'd like to do is ask Ms. McGannon to prepare a resolution for that appointment process. The work of the Water and Sewer Board is going to continue, and I would recommend Mr. Washington at this point, but that is an authority, I think, that needs to be given back to the council. Apparently, there's a provision in state law that changes that for the Power Board, but would like to, if there's no disagreement from the council, I would like to see that appointment authority be given to the city council and removed from the city manager.
Any questions? All right, I ask Ms. McGannon to prepare such a, would it be an ordinance or a resolution?
I'll bring it back to you.
Thank you. All right, you have this, then, these two appointments from the city manager, Water and Sewer Board to Vice Mayor Washington, and the Power Board to Mr. Gilly. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All right, you have a motion and second. Please call the roll.
Mr. Gilly?
Aye.
Ms. Gels Harris?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Washington?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye. Is there other business from staff or city council?
Mayor, I have one quick...
Mr. McFarland?
And to give Ms. McGannon, on our tradition for the last four or five weeks of giving you something to research, I received yet another phone call today about someone who was complaining and also fearful with panhandlers on the side of the street. I think we've seen an increase in that. I just would like to have some kind of research on what other communities have done to address that situation. And I don't know, we've talked, and there may not be anything we can do, but I've had so many phone calls over the last two or three weeks and emails that I think it's something we do need to address, because we're hearing back from the citizens that it is an issue, and I would rather know now before it becomes a greater issue.
Mr. McFarland, Mr. Lyons and I had already discussed that, and the expectation was that there would be a memo coming to you outside the agenda. And the most important thing you can do to give the council options is have people report to the police if there's a problem, because those communities that have been able to make legislation have only been able to do so because there has been a demonstrated problem that would support what some refer to as aggressive panhandling, where the presence of somebody by the side of the street with a sign is not something I expect that we'll be able to do.
Okay.
Anything about, if someone interferes with pedestrian or vehicular traffic, or says something that is threatening, that gives us options. But this had been the subject of previous discussion on more than one occasion with the police chief, and we didn't have reports of behavior of such persons that would support more aggressive laws.
Okay.
So absent facts, we are reduced in our legal options.
So we need to make sure and let residents know if they're feeling threatened, or someone's coming to their car, that they just need to call the police?
With, with specifics, in terms of not, you can just ask for money, but they leaned into my car, they, you know, raised, whatever the occasion might be, we need to have specific facts to support. And obviously, the, the most effective thing we can do is not give such persons money. If you, if they wish to discourage the activity, is, is do not provide any financial benefit from the activity.
We, I mean, I had one mother who called me the other day about, and I know this is private property, but I had an individual going from car to cars, knocking on windows in, in local parking lots, like at Target and areas like that, that they definitely felt threatened, and, and, you know, a lady with a child. So those are, I think that's just something that we can be aware of. So, thank you.
And the risk involved with those people going into the intersection to collect the money, because I know Broad Memorial's gotten to be a, a regular spot for panhandling. And what we're seeing there is, not only are they going out into the road, but then once the light changes, we've got people just scattered about amongst the traffic at the intersection. And I think there's a great risk there of, of having those people. When they're on the sidewalk is one issue. When they're out in the middle of the intersection, it's a completely different issue. And I think that's the risk that we're running now, is, is the actual entry of those people.
We do have, and have consistently had, when solicitation questions come up, the police officers know that being out in the road is not allowed. The problem is, we can't have a police officer there 24/7 to see if they step in or out. Being able to do some more, you know, monitoring of that is certainly something that, that staff will, will work with the department about, but there is a state law that allows people to be in the road to collect. Murphysboro has not adopted that, so we do not allow solicitations from the median or going out into the road. And that's been the consistent advice that, that my office has given police officers when this, and other members of city staff, when this question has come up. So, so that, it may be that we can strengthen what we've done, but that has been our position for a number of years, and, and that is something that the officers are aware of.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much.
One other thing before we close. I would like for the proclamation that we did for former Vice Mayor Brasher to be spread on the minutes of this meeting, and I apologize for leaving that out after it was done. But, anything else? You are adjourned. Thank you very much for your budget review and for the work that you've been doing.
Hi, Dana.